We'll go ahead and call this regular meeting of the USD 431 School Board to order. Roll call, if everyone's present except Jessica Bates. Item three, adoption of the agenda. No changes, correct?
No, that I'm aware of.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? This is six zero. Item four, public comments. Don't see any. Item five, consent agenda. You guys all had within, in front of you, the minutes of nine eight, regular board meeting, nine eight revenue neutral meeting, the nine eight budget hearing, your cash summary report, check journal, and activities account cash balance. Anybody have any questions on any of that?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor? Passes six zero. Item six, old business. Doesn't look like we have any of that, so we'll move on to item seven, new business. Eight is the dual sport policy. Mr. Horn, I'll let you.
Okay. As you guys are probably aware, if you read your notes, I did indicate in there that we have a young man who was brought to you guys as a board discussion item to possibly change the dual sport policy. Currently, you guys, we have a policy that does not allow for dual sport by athletes. I think that's been in place since 2017. I think it's 2017 is the year. He did submit an application that previously asked about allowing him to participate in two sports in the spring. After talking with Becky, we declined that last month simply because there's already a dual sport policy in place. But in future communications with him, he asked to have this brought to the board for discussion. So that is there for you guys to discuss. You do see, I did provide some background information, just the times that I have dealt with a dual sport policy in previous places. I would not be in favor of that change. I just know it does create some problems, but I did itemize those there for you to read if you had the opportunity to read them ahead of time. But with that, I guess, if you guys have any questions for me or Mr. Mason, discussion, and then Brody is here tonight, if you have questions for him as well.
Mr. Mason, your thoughts?
Well, I'd like to start by saying I appreciate Brody and how the process that he's going to go through this to get a policy change. So came to talk to Mr. Fletch on myself first, and he's gone through the right chain of command to get it done, so I applaud him for that. I don't know if you have read the policy. I made a copy of it. The policy, under section 11, dual sporting effective seventeen eighteen school year. Dual sporting between cases sponsored athletic events will not be allowed. Students will be asked to pick one sport per season and construct their full effort on one sport. This does not include students who want to participate in activities. That could be, could be but not limited to cheer, forensic speech, and debate. So obviously, you can do an athletic sport and those at the same time. So that's how the policy reads. I think that was probably my second year or third year as principal when this was put in, but we just had, it was kind of a mess. We had issues with it. So, I mean, my opinion, I don't like dual sporting. I know a lot of schools do allow it, but to me, it kind of, you know, the team aspect should probably be prioritized over individuals. And I know our coaches pull our athletes to high standards to get everything in the practice, and so we're demanding all the athletes to get all the practices. It can be excuse one to miss half the practices to go to another. That's just my philosophy on it. So I'm personally, I'm against dual sporting, so.
And we have had a few others since we've put this policy into place that have not been able to dual sport as well, correct?
Yeah, they came and talked to administration, the building has stopped there, so we've had a few over the years, yes.
Well, I agree. I think that the reason that we did put the policy into place was because of some of the issues that we had, especially with the coaching and sharing the students or the athletes with the other. So, any other thoughts from the board?
Yes, Brody, since you're here, if you want to take the opportunity to kind of make your case?
Yeah, so I, would you guys like me to come up here or?
If you want to, you're more than welcome.
Give me guys a little better voice. So, I think dual sporting provides more opportunities. All to use myself and a couple others is an instance. So, as, since we've grown up, we've played different sports and other activities, and when you get to high school, like, so in middle school, you can do, they have it split up into shorter seasons. You can do wrestling and basketball. You can do four sports instead of three in high school. And when you get to high school, your opportunity to do sports that you've previously done have been cut. You know, you have to choose between cross country or football, or basketball, or wrestling, or the, was it four, I think we have in spring. But dual sporting would allow our athletes that are really good in one sport to contribute to multiple sports, allowing for the success in multiple different sports. So say for my instance, I love two things. Tennis, which I'm an all-state medalist in, and cross country, which I'm an all-state medalist in. Cross country coaches, and specifically, look at track, as you may know, as Camden going to Missouri Southern, they look at your track times as well. You're kind of less desirable if you just do cross country and you don't do track. And you're more to stand out if you were to do track, and they look at your track times and your cross country times. And I haven't previously decided whether I would like to pursue going to college for cross country track or tennis. And this would allow our students, who are good athletes in both, to have multiple different options to succeed and get financial aid in college and such. Do you guys have any questions so far?
You're doing great.
So, I mean, I know the policy has changed. I bet it's in our league, specifically in the CKL. I looked and I called athletic directors, got some policies. Heston just implemented dual sporting since, for, like, they had, they got rid of it for a while and they just implemented it. This is their first year. Larned allows it. Haven, I believe, does. Halsted does as well. So it's about half and half. So half of the schools in our district do, or our league do, half of them don't. And I think it would be a good idea to add our school to their agendas. And another reason why, so, in tennis, last year at state, the singles three-two-one A champion, Charlie Gentile from collegiate, was a state champion in tennis and golf. So it allows you to be successful at multiple things, and like I said previously, have multiple ways of going to college. And if you say one way doesn't work out, or you ended deciding that, you know, cross country wouldn't be a good fit for me in college somewhere, I have a better opportunity to go succeed somewhere in college for tennis, you can take that route while still being able to play that and participating to the team. Because in the end, sports is about the success of the athlete, the success and the growth of the individual athlete in a team manner. And I think there's definitely a way that we can have the team aspect, where we can allow individual students to succeed and flourish as a person. And I had an idea to this, where we could get, I know you said there had been previous instances where coaches, like, sharing athletes in this instance, but I think if we got, took the old policy, made some specific changes to it that are outdated and old, and got the coaches' opinions on how they think this should be sorted out, I think if we reviewed those ideas, we could improve the old policy to make it brought up to the new one, and so it could be, work and be successful. Because I think the policy that we previously had stated was kind of outdated and old, but I think if we updated it, we can fit it with modern times and the modern agenda.
Have you talked to your coaches about that, trying to figure it out?
Oh, yes, I have. So specifically, Neil's dad, I talked to Dan, is, like I said, tennis and cross country dual sporting, I talked to him. I talked to Jordan. I've talked to coaches about this. I know Dan's been a big, big, Mr. Schmidt's been a big supporter of dual sporting. I think Jordan was kind of on the edge. I think it overall comes down to the coaches wanting their athletes to be as successful as possible, being successful not just at that sport, but in multiple things and multiple aspects of life. And I believe dual sporting would allow our athletes to be not only successful in the classroom, but in multiple sports alike.
Brody, I totally agree with, I think it'd be very beneficial for the student athletes. One of my concerns, though, and I could be wrong with this, but postseason, if there is a conflict, like, prior to that, don't you have to pick?
Oh, yes.
Which one, you know, which one you'd want to go to, so, if you qualify?
Yes, so I will, yeah, I'll address that. So, in our old policy, and this is a part of the policy that I would like to keep, is I think this is a very smart idea. When you go to dual sport, you have to pick a primary and a secondary sport. So in my instance, it would probably be tennis is your primary and cross country. And is your primary would take any, like, if there were any conflict, your primary with sport would take priority over your secondary sport. And to bring that up, so tennis and cross country have not a single event, single day, where they collide. Cross country, not cross country, track state, track regionals is, I believe it's a week or two weeks later than state of tennis. Tennis is a really, like, early sport. The state, at least last year, was on May 16th, and the regional was on May 9th. In tracks, regional wasn't till May 22nd, and their state wasn't till May 31st. So, especially in this instance, but for all instances, you could sort out the schedule, but primarily for this one, there would be no conflict of interest as well. And to state as well, so tennis doesn't start practice till 4:30 because the middle school practices before. So not only for me, but for athletes, because I know there's athletes on the tennis team who would like to go to track that I would believe would be very successful in throwing and running or hurdling exercises. So you would have time before tennis to go practice and then go to tennis afterwards, go to track and practice afterwards. But for the other sports that aren't those two, you can get the coaches' opinion to possibly change the old policy to where we can make compromises for the betterment of the athlete.
So Brody, I want to say absolutely thank you for all the research you've done and all the thought you've put into it. So my input on this is going to be taking it away from your individual situation and looking at a broader sphere. And that is making a policy change in the middle of the school year is unfair to our fall athletes. So if I would be in favor of this policy change, I would want to make it in between school years in order to be fair for all seasons. So that's kind of where my, I'd prefer to make a policy change when it could be applicable since our fall athletes wouldn't have had the opportunity to dual sport out of fairness. But I want to say thank you so much for all of the hard work, calling leagues, talking to your coaches, thinking about it, and I think taking a look at our policy and how it's worked would be very beneficial.
I agree. Thank you so much, though. You've done a great job with your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brody, I appreciate that. So I'll just throw some input out there. So I will, you don't have to make it, sit there and answer questions. You posed a lot of stuff that I had already kind of done some research on and prepared as well. Like, I took note of, obviously, the seasonality, like, we're looking at this example, right? We're talking track specifically in tennis, those aligning, and really, as far as even just meets in general, there's hardly any, like, crossover at all.
Yeah.
You can also look, if we're looking at a golf perspective too, that's kind of the same situation. Now, I'll pose this as well, as a thought around this conversation. I personally am, I'm more in favor of dual sporting with parameters. And what I'll say by that is I think that we need to consider this not a blanket conversation or policy change to be okay, we're open the floodgates for dual sporting as a whole. I would think that this needs to be pared down in a sense where we're not, we don't look at what I'll call, I'll call them team sports, and I'll say that kind of with caveat. What I mean by that is we're talking tennis, yes, it's a team sport, Brody, be your, for by and large, a singles player, that's what you call it.
Oh, I played one doubles matchup, so that's just because.
And your, your track competition is, you're a distance runner, I'll say distance running, but, you know.
Yeah, it's two mile, yeah.
So, we're looking at that, okay, golf, right? You're, you're on the golf team, but you're performing as an individual. I don't think from a perspective of, we're talking spring sports here, baseball, softball, I wouldn't think that would be a good idea if we're talking about cohesiveness on a diamond. You got to be able to turn plays, you got to be able to do things as a team, right? So I wouldn't be in favor of doing something in that regard. Same goes if we're talking in the fall season, let's say, on the boys' side, football and cross country, that wouldn't make sense, right? We're on the football team, we're running plays, we're working together. Those types of things, I think, are completely different conversation. The spring aspect here, when we're talking, you know, I'm thinking tennis and track in this example, golf, tennis, golf track, those types of things may, may make more sense for a dual sport conversation. In the same breath, I'll also say a caveat with me for track would also be sprint relays because handoffs, those types of things, I would think that coaches would probably agree with that. When we previously had the policy, I know that that was also something that was like, you know, we're not really, in a sense, going to have sprint relayers, you know, doing dual sports because of the intricacies that go into that. In this regard, I would, I kind of almost think that, you know, we're taking some time to digest this. This is the first time we've had this conversation. I wouldn't be opposed to continuing the conversation. I know we were talking spring, so we do have a little time if we're thinking about implementing it. I'm almost curious if we could consider a trial period for this spring and see what that looks like, but I also would like to, you know, I think getting direct coach input is a good thing. I know you have some, but also continuing that conversation may be a good thing as So, primary established, you mentioned that, I think that's a, that's a good thing to think about as well. When it comes to that, of course, considerations would need to be around, what if a meet gets rescheduled? But there again, with your primaries established, if we have an existing meet here, from the other, it's on that same day, we know where we're going, right? It's all about the policy and having that written in, having the precedent there, so if some of those weird things that happen, we have some ideas around it. So, from my perspective, I know I'm talking a lot, these are all the things that I've thought about in preparation for our meeting today. I mean, personally, I'm more leaning toward, I say, in favor of it with some of those parameters, caveats, being able to consider that because this is an interesting conversation.
Man, I agree with Neil. If you can get your coaches together and get like an outline for like your meets and everything, that everything will line up. I know those are going to be coaches that aren't going to let.
Of course.
Other athletes dual sport, and that'd be, I would say, up to them if they wanted their athletes to dual sport.
So if you got approval from both sides, you'd be able to do it?
Yeah.
And I, I did have been talking to Mr. Schmidt as someone who's been around, I mean, for ages, but he went back when dual sporting was allowed here. I think Neil does have a really good, really good point, that a trial would be interesting to see how it goes, since it's been a while. I mean, what, it's, in two years, it'll be a decade since we've had dual sporting. A trial would be an interesting thing to try, and that's why I was talking to Mr. Schmidt as well, is, as we've seen in the past and from other schools, dual sporting primarily works best when you have an athlete that does two primarily individual sports. I think the problem comes in when you have an athlete who does a team sport where their coach is like, well, I need my athlete here because there's a team aspect, like, if you're doing football and cross country, when you need to be there learning plays and stuff. I feel like, like, maybe allowing dual sporting just specifically in the springs, that's when most of your individual sports are golf, men's golf. And even in the fall, you could do, have a girl running cross country and playing golf as well. But I think a trial or something that we could do to test and get coaches' feedback and well would be maybe one of the best ways that we could, we could try to pull this off and give it a chance at least. It's been a while.
Yeah. I think it warrants some further discussion, for sure. I'm not going to close the door and say it's an absolute no, but give us a chance to kind of have some conversations and.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Gather some more information, and we'll kind of go from there. But thank you again for coming and for giving and talking to us.
Yeah, thanks for hearing me out, guys. Really appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Right, since we have our athletic director here, should we let him weigh in?
Sure. I got to get going. Do you have an hour?
No. You have two minutes. Absolutely.
Well, I mean, I'm going to be a politician here, and I see both sides, but, you know, I've been here for a month. This policy's here for a reason. And individually, it may work with him, and I've talked to him about this, but most of my coaches that I've spoken to are not in favor of it. I think other administrators I've spoken to are not in favor of it. And I think we all, there's a lot of valid reasons on both sides. I spoke to two or three buddies of mine, they're in athletic administration today at the high school level, and they said, don't go down that road. They said it's going to cause too much dissension between your kids and your coaches, and, you know, you want your kids to give a hundred percent to their sport that they choose, and if they do dual sports, they're not giving a hundred percent. That's not fair to the, to that sport. So, you know, he's been awesome, he spoke to me about it individually. Neil, I appreciate what you said about some parameters, but, I mean, when you're looking at policy, I don't, I don't think you can do that, though. I don't know if you can just do it on an individual basis, because a great dad had a football kid that kicked field goals, you know, and that's a team sport, two team sports, and, you know, if we did certain parameters, I don't know if that would, is that kind of what you were, you were talking about individual sports, maybe?
Yeah, it would be, it would be one of those things you'd have to really, I mean, there's so many interesting situations, and they can vary from thing to thing, so.
And that was two team sports, and, you know, it worked, but the kid never practiced football. I mean, he went out and kicked field goals because he was a soccer kicker, and he could kick about forty-five yards. So, I mean, there's just, there's just so many unique scenarios, and it's just, I, I, I said, I'm new, haven't ever been an A D at the high school level. I don't mind y'all putting me on the spot, but all I can do is talk to people that have been through it, talk to people that have lived in this community, you know. I know Mason would dispute this, but I was a hell of an athlete in high school. We never, we never would have had an opportunity to do multiple sports, ever. I mean, you just, you just wouldn't have. And so this is all, I don't, I don't want to say small school, big school, but I, I just am not used to it. When I was recruiting at the college, I recruited three sport athletes all the time, and I loved that they played multiple sports, and I hated when they specialized. And it's kind of talking out of both sides of our mouth because we want kids to be involved, and yet, you know, he may be penalized because he wants to do more than what you can't do more. But, you know, on the other hand, there's reasons, there's valid, deep down, rooted reasons, I believe, community-wise, why this policy's been in place. So who am I to come in and, you know? Also, one more thing, and this doesn't affect Brody as much, but, you know, recruiting, it's kind of sad to say, but I look at some of our athletes now, and I would hate to discriminate against an athlete if it was an opportunity for them to get a scholarship, you know, if it was an opportunity for them to pursue, you know, four-year school, whatever. But I hate to say it, but it kind of shoots a hole in what we're doing sometimes, but these kids get more recruitment outside of high school through travel and A U and team ball than they do whizin' in high school. And so we have a freshman girl that's a real good tennis player that wasn't allowed to do both. Well, she's going to play tennis immediately as soon as volleyball's over. If she ever wants to play high school or college tennis, they're going to see her there before they're going to see her whizin' in high school. And she's going to go to events and travel, and I don't know if that's an opportunity And she's gonna go to events and travel and I, I don't know if that's an opportunity for Brody. I don't know what you're.
I, I do. I do tournaments out all summer.
And so, to me, I would feel better that we're not discriminating against a kid that would, you know, because he still has opportunities that maybe ten years ago you didn't have. If you didn't play high school sports and that was an avenue that you could, you know, achieve a scholarship in and you were denied that, that, that'd be tough for me to see that. But now that I know there's so many ways of skinning the cat, you know, I, I don't think we're, I don't think we're punishing them. So.
Thank you for your input. I think we'll still continue to have conversations and try to come up with the best situation for the district. Okay, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for all the conversations you guys did and a lot of work.
Did your homework.
Go on.
You gotta keep those grades up. Thanks again, Brody. All right. We will go ahead and move on to item B, District Needs Assessment, State Assessment Review.
So this is something I spoke about um, a couple of meetings ago and, and my board report and gave you a little background information to it. And then I have provided you guys some pre, some other information through uh, Friday Notes, but, uh, it is on, on, on there for you able, for you to be able to bring up and look at. There's also a, um, an Excel spreadsheet version of it there if you wanna look in some of the, on the state, on the needs assessment. It doesn't all show up in the box. You have to look up at the top. The state assessment review is technically what you have to approve to put on the, uh, on the school website. And what you approve tonight, if you choose to approve it tonight, if you wanna wait another month, you can. But it really, it's information provided, it's information been gathered from the principals. There's nothing in there that binds the board or the district to, well, we have to do that because that's in our needs assessment. Needs assessment is just a gathering of information. It's not a plan of action. So, but we do have to approve a needs assessment slash state assessment review and put it on the website. So, I, I know the state assessment review, this will be the second time you've had the opportunity to read through it. Because I provided it a week ago in Friday Notes. You have any questions? I try to answer.
I'd say thank you to all our administrators for all the time because I know the data we're looking at is the result of a lot of work. So, thank you for all your time and effort. I must still love our graduation rate, so.
Anybody have any questions? If not, I move to approve the needs assessment and state assessment review.
Second.
Then moved in second and all in favor. Passes six zero.
We'll get your signature on that at the end of the night. Okay.
All right. Item C, Health Insurance Provider. Mr. Horn, I think you were just gonna give some information.
Uh, yep, alright. So, I provided you guys um, a little background information here this fall. I've been writing about this on more than one occasion. Yeah, in the system, you have a couple of items in there that you could look at. Basically, when I got here, just some of the things I've been looking at are where are we in terms of efficiencies? Um, how can we be more efficient? Did first look at our property and casual, casualty insurance, but found out pretty early in the summer that uh, you guys are already in the uh, the KIX program, which is what we had transitioned to at Stanton County. Did take a look at health insurance. I know we are in the ESDAQ group. Uh, at Stanton County, we were not in the ESDAQ group. We were in a different group, but I know when I first started talking to Trish about health and, health insurance this summer and then uh, we saw what our premium, what our quotes were for our premium. It was a little bit, it, it jumped out at me because I know it was significantly more than what we were paying at Stanton County. So it just, prompted me to start digging a little more just to see what, what information I could come up with. And I have provided you guys with, the actual rate sheets for um, our ESDAQ plan, the other state group, state plan, that Stanton County's a part of, and then a standalone school uh, here in uh, in Kansas, just so, you could kinda get an idea of what those look like. And I did put it on, into a, in a, into a chart for you that kinda further breaks it down, just simplified. It's not every part or every part of the coverages that are in there, because those rate sheets have a lot of different things on there. But it does have the premium, the deductibles, uh, co-insurance, maximum out-of-pockets, things like those um, for your review. What the information told me is that certainly I feel like probably need to gather more information. I wanted your guys' feedback to feel like I wanna proceed forward. We do have the Health Insurance Committee. That would probably be my next step is to see about having them come together, provide them with the same information that you've been provided so they can see. And then from there, um, really our timeline is February first. Uh, that's kind of where we have to make a decision because we're in the ESDAQ group. And if you're gonna make a decision to do anything different, you have to make that decision prior to February first because, after February first, we have to give eight months' notice to ESDAQ if you wanted to make a change at all. And so February first is kind of the deadline to make any change. Doesn't mean you're gonna change. It just means um, that is the deadline if you want to make a change. So I, I feel like there's probably rationale to try to gather more information, talk with the Health Insurance Committee, and then possibly even, seek outside uh, quotes from other providers other than Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas. That's what most of us are used to. I've never had insurance that was not Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas. But if we were to get quotes from somebody other than Blue Cross and Blue Shield in December or January, still doesn't mean you're committed to making a change. But it would provide more information.
There's a lot of hospitals that aren't taking Blue Cross, Blue Shield anymore, so it'd be good to look into different insurance companies.
Definitely.
I would add, just as, as we're looking into considerations and taking steps at the Health Committee, just to contact Claire Barton and make sure whichever plans would line up with our local health provider. So, just as a, you know, deal breaker note. So, if we run into a plan that's not being accepted by Claire Barton, that would probably impact a lot of staff. Particularly on the emergency room.
And Hatch is back on with Blue Cross too. Just, just to throw that out there because that was, they were dropped.
Oh yeah, that was, that was huge. So, um, but Hatch hasn't picked them back up, so.
Hatch who?
Hatch Hospital. A lot of, um, some of our specialists get referred down to, so any endocrinology and that sort of stuff, Hatch has been getting referred a lot of referrals. I'd be in favor. I mean, I think you're right that the rationale is just there to do some more information seeking.
Absolutely.
Yep, I already talked with you, Mr. Horn, so we already visited about that. I mean, I'm in favor of just checking out, like, i- it's all gonna be, you know, everything's driven by what the rates and premium, I mean, it's driven by claims and, and data. Right now, we just, we just don't know, right? I mean, since we're, it's just worth exploring and seeing what we can find out. You could find out, hey, we, we've got high claims and yeah, it's great being in, in ESDAQ. We share that risk amongst a big pool and, okay, I mean, but, without fully having some additional information, we don't have the full knowledge on it. So I think that being able to do that is a good exercise.
Yeah, right now, we don't know what our claims look like. Could be the rates are because of what they are. I, I know um, I talked to another school that's in the ESDAQ pool and we have the exact same rates they do. So I'm guessing, because I'm in, I'm, I've been in two different groups that uh, maybe that's what we all get. In that other state pool where I came from, from Stanton County, it wasn't that way. Everybody had their own rate. So you still shared the risk. So the, the movement, there wasn't much movement. I know that. But everybody didn't get the same rate. So when you're looking at the other state group on that information there, um, at that rate, that, that Stanton County's and they are actually above average in their group. The average rate in that group is lower than that. So, little different. Um, that was a little surprising to me because I came from there where everybody had their own rate still, even though you're in a group to one that seems like I think we all have the exact same rates.
And when you talk to the committee, I think a good thing to like push to them, because we, we tried this last year. And um, I think to get rates and stuff from some of the, some of the companies we were checking with, we had to have some data to provide them.
Sure.
And it was sent out to staff and staff was not very good about sending back the information needed. And so it, it kind of fell flat. That was one of the reasons it kind of fell flat when we were trying to, look at other avenues last year is because there wasn't good employee participation. Like, we needed, we have to have data to send to some of those to get quotes or get what we need. And so um, so if you do have a meeting with the committee, like, and, I mean, that's probably an important thing to, to see if they can help.
The feedback.
Yeah, push, push that out to their buildings and to their people because, I mean, you have to have data to give to them.
Yeah, and I knew they'd had that meeting in the, uh, about a year or so ago. I think you guys had told me that. And I don't know what information was provided to them during that meeting. What was shared with them, what I'm planning to share with them.
This was just a survey that was sent out to the staff, because I think we had that discussion in the, in the meeting. And so this was a survey that went out to staff that they were supposed to fill out and then send back in. I don't, I don't know. I don't know if we had very good numbers participate in that, so. So that's just something to think of when we do this, is, is we really need to get everyone on board to like, participate so we can get like the best quotes and stuff that we need.
We'll make sure that we communicate with them that just, just by gathering the information doesn't mean a change is gonna be made. It just means we're still gathering information.
Yes.
It, it may come down to the January meeting where you have all the information in front of you and it's just not the best decision to, to make any change. Um, but we just don't know until we gather all of the information.
Sounds good. Alright, item D, Conference Meal Reimbursement Policy.
This again is something I think I wrote about to you guys in uh, Friday Notes. Currently, uh, when we have staff that goes to conferences, um, there is no meal reimbursement policy. Um, they take the credit card and, or get reimbursed and they submit their receipts. And I know I wrote to you guys that I don't know that it's being abused by any, any, in any fashion, but, not knowing and leaving that discretion up to staff, um, you know, hopefully we would like to think they always make the right, proper decision. But where I've been, that, we just had meal allowances and I have written about two different, different uh, possible policies there that indicate whether it be for breakfast, lunch, or, or dinner, certain amounts, or just a daily amount that they can spend up to. So I'd be interested to know what your guys' feedback there is. Um, my, I, I know you guys know, if you've read my notes, my personal preference is to at least have something established. Whether it's a, um, a certain amount for breakfast, a certain amount for lunch, and then dinner, or a daily allotment, at least then we know what we're getting into. So, I'd appreciate your feedback.
The fifty dollar per diem would, for, would be perfectly fine.
I looked at the, they just published the twenty-twenty-six G S A rates. So, my thought was if you wanted to have it tied, because I know food inflation and prices of things have been going up, if you wanted to tie it to the Kansas standard rate for G S A, they do have a breakout for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. So you could either roll it up into a per diem based on the G S A rate, or you could just go by the G S A rate. So.
Just one flat fee or one flat?
Yeah, they're slightly higher than the amounts, um, just because of the twenty-twenty-six numbers, so they went up just a little bit. And it's um, sixteen for breakfast, so you could round it down to fifteen. Lunch is nineteen, you could round it up to twenty, and dinner's twenty-eight. So, they're not too far. They're within the five dollars of what you had proposed in your notes. So, but I did notice that they did increase that a little bit, which comes up to, I think it was sixty-eight dollars total.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't look up those rates. I just, I eat out quite a bit, so I go by what I'm used to in that uh, twenty-five dollars is what I proposed for the dinner, at least was what I wrote in there. And I just know most of the places I could eat supper on twenty-five dollars at this time.
Well, and even if we did like a fifty dollar a day, if you stay in a place where a breakfast is offered, then yet that would give you a little bit more of a cushion for your supper meal if you do have to go somewhere a little bit more pricey. It gives you a little bit extra to kind of pad that. Doesn't mean you have to spend it all, but it gives you that amount.
I like the easy accounting on a flat rate. My question is for half-days. Do you give them a half, a half of the daily rate if it's a, if the conference ends at noon, or if the conference is, ends at eleven? Or do you still give them the full-day rate? It's easier accounting to do a flat rate, but.
Just flat rate?
I mean, yeah, I think if it's just a half a day, then there's no point in giving them the full fifty. Give them half. They can still, even if it's the evening meal, it's twenty-five dollars. That's just my opinion. What does everybody else think? Do you like it broken down better, or do you like it as a flat?
I almost like it broken down because then you've got your, you know, per meal standards. I mean, and especially in those instances when it is a half-day or, you know, it covers, maybe just covers the noon hour, you know, you know what you're allowed to spend.
I've worked with meeting planners too that like if, like just on the federal per diem side, like for trade teams or international travel, like, if breakfast was provided by the hotel, then you wouldn't get the breakfast per diem. You'd only have to pay out lunch and, or if lunch was provided at the conference, you wouldn't get the lunch per diem. So, but that's a lot more tracking. As far as like having, having to report on your expense sheet and then somebody having to track and compare that. So, it's a lot.
Some ease of office would be a good preference.
This would be Taylor's deal. I mean, the easiest thing is just to set a flat amount.
Yeah.
That's the easiest strategy.
If I was doing it through payroll, like I would rather have like, a set amount and not have to worry about. Because you're gonna have to either pay attention to the times on the tickets, or you're gonna have to have them ride on the ticket, breakfast, lunch, supper, like, I mean,
Right.
It's gonna be more tracking it down and trying to sort it and figure it out than if you just give them.
And then you just reimburse them. Even if they go over the amount, you would just reimburse them fifty.
I also feel like the, the user, right? You're like, okay, well, my breakfast, I know I, I remember I had ten bucks today, but okay. The next meal I'll have fifteen. You know, you're just trying, I don't know. Even if, if you know them, yeah, that's fine, but I just also, you know, it's just another thing to have to recall.
So is everybody in agreement to do fifty dollars per day, but twenty-five per half-day? Does that sound fair?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that. G S A's a little higher than that. They round up to seventy a day and thirty-five based on, but that's just what the government rate is. So, that's just for a data comparison.
So, I guess my question would be like, it's just if I was at a conference, I would have the question like, so, the conference ends at noon, but you're still giving them a noon and supper rate? Or like if you're doing a, like how, like?
If it ends at noon, I would say you give them the breakfast, the lunch rate, and they don't get the supper rate.
Okay.
Which kinda ends up being about the same anyway.
Yeah.
Based on the figures I have.
Yeah, yeah. But if you're going to one in the afternoon into the evening, then they get the, the twenty-five anyway. So, noon would be kind of the cutoff for the half-day. In my opinion. Sound good? I move to establish the following conference meal policy, um, at twenty-five dollars per half-day and fifty dollars per day.
Second.
Then moved in second and all in favor. Passes six zero. And then we will move on to league gate fees.
So this is actually from middle school. Um, Mr. Flowers, probably very early last week. I just found out about this. I know there had, they have a meeting coming up, a league meeting, uh, in which he had reached out to me and asked about what my thoughts were on, uh, charging for league activities, gate fees for league activities. Currently for our league activities, they don't charge. Uh, they do if it's a non-league activity. And he asked my thoughts and I'm like, it really wouldn't be up to me, it'd be up to you guys. So, he, at their next meeting, I believe this may be an action item where they wanna know what schools want to do. So, I want the ability to at least give them feedback on what your guys' thoughts were. So, um, your, I'd appreciate your thoughts on, um, or a motion on if you guys are in support or not in support of, whether or not we want Mr. Flowers to vote yes or no for uh, middle school gate fees, admission fees into activities.
Was there a justification given for why folks wanted to start collecting? Because when they started choosing for the, out-of-league ones, part of it was to do custodial staff, or that was kind of the reason when that one went into effect, is there a justification given?
Well, he, he didn't give me other than, you know, high school already pays for it and it's just additional expenses that they'd be able to, um, high school does charge admission fees, but additional revenue for schools to bring in for, to help pay for activities, hosting activities, and money to be put into activities. So, he didn't give me a lot of information, uh, but it was pretty quick. I just found out about it, so. Unless Catherine knows anything about it.
Uh, yeah, I asked him to write up, knowing that this was an action item, write up the justification. Cost of rising, the rising cost of running the events, but the bigger thing was the uh, competition of uh, getting officials. Smoky Valley charges fifty dollar, or pays fifty dollars a match for their officials. We charge or pay them thirty-five dollars. Uh, Lard and Heston football games are seventy-five dollars a match, uh, for officials. We pay fifty. Heston and Smoky Valley, Valley Basketball, uh, pay forty-five dollars a game. We pay thirty-five dollars a game. So, in order to try to continue to be uh, competitive with some of our bigger, bigger school districts, uh, that was kind of his justification towards that, uh, is to help offset those costs because a lot of, um, the officials are now starting to go to some of these bigger districts that may pay mileage and pay more, where we don't pay mileage and we're paying less. The possible rate fees that they were talking about is a flat five-dollar rate for everyone. Or five dollars for adults, three dollars for students, which is what we currently do for non-league games. Um, and then the third option is three dollars for adults, two dollars for students. Uh, this was mentioned at the last meeting, but there was not uh, much favor for it. So his opinion is continuing the five dollars for adults and three dollars for students uh, at the middle school level. And his justification is that it would be a good for the middle school, excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, in order to be, maintain being competitive for officials, uh, as we are receiving more requests about mileage and rates per game. So that, he had to say that there were a few people that turned down coming here in favor for someplace that paid mileage plus a higher rate.
So it sounds like there's two questions there. One is that we're not paying mileage and other schools are. And so if we didn't in charge, would then now, activity passes right now don't cover, remind me, activity passes don't cover out-of-league games? They only count for lea, for league events?
We have, we have C K L passes. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, but they're only for, yeah.
Not everybody.
The passes that you guys bought for your kids, they work for all home, whether it's league or non-league.
League or non-league, yeah, okay.
And uh, they accept all of them.
Nick honors them for everything.
Yeah, okay.
And the middle school does not get that, any, any of that, and I'm saying that, but we don't get that. So, um, with the, the pay for the officials coming out of the school athletics fund, this would help offset some of that, so we could offer a higher rate at the middle school level.
Fletch, for high school, do we reimburse for mileage?
No. That's a league. The league, the league sets our range, excuse me, for the varsity level.
Okay.
So whatever the league says, that's what we have to pay. Now, so varsity, you can pay what you want. So that being at the middle school level, there's no league policy on what to pay officials, it sounds like, because they're all over the place.
I wear to exactly what.
That's probably the case.
Yeah.
Just, I guess if, as a district, if we're against admission fees at the middle school level, if the league votes for it and puts it in, then we will have to do that here for league events, just to follow suit with the league.
So it's more of what, what is the recommendation so I can pass it on to Nick, or Mr. Horn can pass it on to Nick?
So we don't necessarily have to make a motion on whether or not we would start charging. We just need to give a recommendation to Nick to give to the league meeting, correct?
Yeah, because that, my guess is at the league meetings, Joel, you guys have been there, but there, if they're going to try to pass that where they are gonna charge, I assume that's gonna be a vote.
Yes.
And so Nick's gonna need to know how to vote.
Okay, so, so versus how the motion is worded, we just really need to have a register. We, I move to recommend to the league that the league start versus us deciding whether or not to do it ourselves at this point in time.
Yeah.
So it's slightly, slightly different worded motion.
Do we even need a, do you even need a motion for that? Or are you just telling him what you recommend?
Well.
I, I really need to know what, because it shouldn't be up to me and it shouldn't be up to Mr. Flowers to cast that vote that's going to then impose admission fees on people in our community. I mean, if you guys don't want admission fees charged, you need to tell him to vote no. And if you support, if the league goes in that direction, then allow him to vote yes. But I, he really needs to know what your guys' opinion is.
Yeah, yes or, yes or no, and then. Yeah, yes or, yes or no, and then if it is yes, which denominations? And then league meeting is on Wednesday. Sorry.
Again, found out about this just last week.
I, I was gonna say, we got a lot of pushback from parents when they started charging for out of league, for middle school events, so I'll just put that piece of in there that I remember there was a a lot of pushback for charging for any middle school events, and part of that was the confusion on like which ones had a charge and which ones didn't, which has been cleared up, but I'll, I'll insert that into the.
But if the league determines that we have to start charging, do we get to set? So if we say, we'll go ahead and start charging, but do we get to set the prices? Or is that something the league comes down and says, okay, you have to do it anyway?
League sets it.
Yeah.
League sets it.
And we, actually, we've talked about it every meeting, and I, I'm not privy to the middle school meetings, but I don't think it's gonna go up at the high school. I think most of the people are adamant about not raising it for their community.
What do we charge at the high school again?
Six and five. And there's been some talk about going seven and five, but I don't think they're gonna raise it. If they do, it'll be your way, but I I don't think it's gonna, I don't think they're gonna pass it to middle school, they're not passing it to high school.
Hmm, but not passing an increase.
Correct.
But they could pass that all middle schools have to start charging for, I mean, there, there's a very good possibility that that's gonna happen.
There's a chance.
And we're gonna have to do that anyway. And then we can at least ex- have Nick express to the league what we would like to see as far as what we charge.
I think from the conversation I had with Nick, it sounds like some people want to do the five dollar flat fee for everyone because it just makes it easier. Uh, cuz then you don't have to have one dollar bills or anything. He's more in favor of, on, just as the middle school AD of going to five dollars and three dollars, cuz that is what we currently already charge for non-league events. So would it be a whole new system, per se, it would just be a continuation of what's already in place?
You gotta look at the officials too. I mean, they're taking time out of their life to come
Right.
officiating, and if there's no officials, there's no game.
Oh, and the other thing you did mention to me is that some of our volleyball officials specifically are starting to get to the point of retirement. So we are going to have to figure something out to be competitive with the younger officials coming up who are more willing to drive out of county.
I almost, I'm just speaking on a completely personal level, um, I would almost be in favor of not imposing, but looking at if we can work a way into doing mileage re- reimbursement, if we're looking at getting people from out of town. But I would not, at, at this point in time, I would not be in favor of, of doing middle school rates for any league events. But I'm happy to be the minority if the board decides otherwise.
It's just hard to make a decision not knowing what the league's gonna do, I mean, because we could say no, but they're gonna enforce it anyway, and then we're gonna be, you know, compelled to do it. Anyway, so, I mean.
But at least if you, if your determination is no, then Nick knows how he's supposed to vote.
Yeah.
And I know my girls are in middle school and they implemented the charging, and I, and the reason they did it was because when we were going to other non-league events, we were getting charged, and so I think that was the basis of that, like, I mean.
We're going there and paying, then they should come here.
Parent that was going there and paying like we were, I mean, I was
Well, and it really was to help us offset, you know, official fees and stuff like that as well.
That, that's what I'd be in favor for, because like I said, if you don't got the officials, you don't got a game.
Right.
I'd wanna see, I, I don't feel like there's, uh, the, I'm always the data person. Um, the fees, like how much the difference would earn, and whether that would cover the difference in the difference in, uh, the cost between an official, what other schools are paying, and that, like, is there a price point that makes sense where it does offset that amount rather than arbitrarily throwing an amount out, so.
Our non-league games break even, so the money that we bring in helps offset, uh, the volleyball games.
But, so the five and three?
Yeah, that does offset, and then we break even, or I think Nick said, I haven't looked at the number specifically, so I don't have like raw numbers to give you. Um, but one of the games we made a hundred dollars, but at the very least we break even on all of it, okay?
It'll just depend on the game, cuz some schools travel better than others, so, and that, that's no different than high school, I mean.
And just out of curiosity, does it apply to like cross-country and like, in all sports, or is it sports specific?
It's, it's probably not gonna apply to anything like track or cross-country, a little, I've never been anywhere where they do that, it's probably gonna be basketball, volleyball, and football, maybe, that's probably about it, wrest- wrestling.
Sarah, thoughts?
And if we did recommend to vote yes, um, I mean, I, I wouldn't be in favor if there was an increase, like, well, depending on the fees, and I think three dollars for students is twenty.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I would be inclined to go with the five for adults, three for students.
Yeah, more than that than a blank image.
Yeah.
So would that be, uh, your motion would be, you would be a vote yes if it's five and three, otherwise no? If the student is more than three?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Which would be what we could tell Nick, that if they are recommending a flat five, then he's gotta vote no, if they're
And activity passes would be honored.
How do activity passes?
I mean, honestly, if they're charging up in middle school, we probably look at what do we pay, what do we, what's our fifteen dollars for an activity? I don't know, you could probably go to twenty, and then we can split our
Split it with middle school, and then the middle school will start selling them as well.
Yeah, or we just, or district, district one and just split it.
Well, I mean, yeah, like do a district one, and then
Okay.
Have all
It's one frame.
Yeah, yeah, just one.
That'd be the easiest way, I think.
Yeah, I think.
Instead of having to, people have to buy a high school pass per
Yeah, no, no, just one
Just one flat.
School cardinal activity pass.
Activities, the, the league doesn't dictate that, we can do what we want on that.
I just, that would be my recommendation to Nick, is that, that we could honor that, if we could offset it.
And he, he already honors the activity passes.
Which, yeah, and that brings up an interesting topic, I mean, he's honoring that, yeah, middle school should be able to.
Yeah, we're not getting the money.
Yeah, you shouldn't be able to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But for his purpose, it's, I mean, if it's five and three, you guys would support that, if that's the motion you make, but if they're gonna charge a flat rate and five dollars for students, then he would, you would not, uh, that's what I'm hearing, but you'll need to make a motion, but that's what I'm hearing, if that's what you guys, some of you may still be like, it doesn't matter if it's a flat five, but.
Okay, so I move to allow Mr. Flowers to vote yes at the league meet if the cost per entry were five dollars for adults, three dollars for students. And if it is a five dollar flat fee or higher, we vote no.
I'll say second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all in favor? That was mouthful, all opposed, one, so passes five to one. Thank you for your discussion on that.
Mr. Horn, um, whatever is appropriate, maybe we could talk about whether we need to start reimbursing for mileage on a ba- on, or is that set by the league at the high school level?
It's set by the league at high school level for varsity level, we don't pay mileage.
Alright, so just at the middle school level, then that comes up at the league meeting.
Okay, you ready to move on to item F, fees waived policy?
Okay, fees waived policy, uh, the reason I bring this up is because currently the way our fees in the district are waived are handled differently from built, from basically preschool is handled differently than every other student in the district. Um, right now, fees are waived for students if, uh, they qualify for free meals for everybody except for the preschool. Preschool, their fees have, in the past have been waived for preschool if they meet what's considered at-risk qualification. Um, uh, financial need or free meals is only one of nine different categories that can have can cause a student to be considered at-risk. Um, so, really, I need to understand what your guys' expectations are in terms of how do we assess those, cuz, um, it's being handled differently in two different ways, and typically, Shelby can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, at, uh, preschool, they've waited to, um, waive fees until after they have been tested and determined whether or not they've been at-risk, because they've had nine opportunities to have their fees waived, and everybody else has had one opportunity to have those, their fees waived.
Was that part of the grant conditions?
Yeah, so, I mean, at one time, there were two different grants, there, there still are. There was your KPP and your at-risk, so currently, we only qualify for the at-risk grant. So if you look back eight years ago, when we qualified for those grants, we were qualifying for money up to six figures. We are now qualifying for money up to four figures, because there are so many school districts that apply for those grants, that the funding has been cut drastically. But also take into account that we are, I mean, our preschool students, right now, we have a hundred percent of our preschool students qualifying at-risk based on any of the nine criteria. That could be free reduced lunch, it could be academic off the brigands, it could be social emotional off the ASQSE, um, it can be because they have an IEP in speech or anything like that, it could be, uh, a teen mom, it can be a single mom, um.
Just any one of those.
Yes.
Any one of them.
Any one of those, and it just takes one to qualify them at-risk. Now, they can also qualify under multiple. But.
Does standardizing it with the rest of the school district hurt any future grant opportunities?
Say that again.
Does standardizing it, so it's, if preschool's the outlier, or waive fees, if standardizing it with the rest of the school district, would that hurt our grant funding opportunities in the future?
I don't believe so, but I mean, you're, you're, I'm trying to
Not all of your preschool are gonna qualify free and reduced. And so, if that's what K-12 is qualifying at-risk on your, for your reduced, not all of your preschool students are gonna qualify at that.
Well, yeah, I guess I took that as you're saying, will that hurt other grant opportunities?
Yes, yeah.
I can't predict what, I can't predict what another grant's going to be, but, I mean, the preschool, the at-risk grant, the preschool grant, in twenty twenty-one, the KPP, which is the Kansas preschool pilot, that got rolled into the at-risk grant, and the KPP was kind of designed to help support three-year-olds in the preschool program, but when they rolled it into twenty twenty-one and rolled it into the other grant, if those of you, if your three-year-olds were already qualifying for at-risk, um, then we are getting some weighted funding for that because they're in that other grant. Now, it doesn't mean we haven't lost money, because I fought this at Stanton County too, we were losing it as well because we were getting funding through another source from them, uh, through that other grant opportunity, the at-risk, the preschool grant. Um, but as Shelby indicated, and as I wrote in your guys' notes, two years ago, it was a little over eighty-five thousand dollars that we received for the KPP grant. Last year, it was a little over thirty, and this year, we got none. So we are losing funding, and we have lost funding, and I don't think the KPP will come back. We won't probably qualify. And when I talked to the state two years ago, um, because I lost money in Stanton County, and I called and complained about it, um, they just said, well, you're getting funding in other sources, and this is supporting the schools are not getting those funds, and they're like, there's just too many schools applying for this grant, so. Might this decision impact a future grant that I don't know about yet? Well, maybe, but I don't, I don't know at this point. Will it impact some families? Of course, it's going to be, um, but it's just, do you wanna standardize so everybody's being assessed and having their fees waived the exact same way, cuz currently, we aren't doing that practice.
I would say if it's not gonna impact current grants or current prospective grants, then standardizing it with the district makes sense.
Our current grants, it's not gonna impact it, that won't impact at all.
But also take into account that last year, we, we, we raised the preschool fee from sixty-five to a hundred dollars. So now, I mean, that is a greater fee than what you're charging your K-12 students.
I mean, if if we did standardize, I mean, then we would have to
You'd have to have a, you'd have, yeah, you'd have to have a flat fee.
Cuz if, if we're gonna standardize, if we made this whole
You're doing it for fees.
Then you're standardizing it.
Standardizing it for everybody.
The only but to that is that, um, preschool only counts a half in FTE, funding purposes, we don't get the same amount for them as they do for everybody else. So, I mean, it, we get thousands of dollar, thousands of dollars less for every preschool student than we do anybody.
And your preschool, correct me, Carrie, I know, but your preschool don't, they don't pay that tech fee cuz they're not considered one-to-one. They have iPads, yes, but they're not considered a one-to-one. So like, with your K-12 fees, you have your textbook fee, your tech fee. Just the two, so sixty-five and ten?
For your level, yes.
Okay, so, our preschool are at a hundred dollars.
And I don't know that that's specifically for tech or textbooks, that's to help support having a preschool program.
That is just, it is just labeled preschool fee. And quite honestly, it's been, I mean, like, I just need an answer. Because this is something like I battle with every year, and so I just need a like, I really just need a black and white and a policy in place. I mean, I have a letter ready for parents to send home if their kid qualifies at-risk, and under what ones they qualify. Um, I also have a letter to send home if their kid does not qualify at-risk, and this fee will be assessed, but I just need it like very black and white on what you want to do.
Thoughts?
I mean, if it's something you wanna think about, I mean, obviously, the fees aren't going anywhere, they haven't been assessed as of right now. Um, and I mean, I can certainly reach out to preschool parents and let them know, like, this is a public discussion. You know, I mean, it's not a big deal, I just need like a concrete answer.
Is this something that, that we would hold off till next school year though, instead of?
No, because no fees have been assessed yet.
Well, but that's what I
You might no change, though, it's gonna be
The change, yes, you could.
You, you know, I mean, cuz then it could just, it's already confusing somewhat, you know, I don't know, maybe just
Yes, ideally you could, and I mean, cuz, I mean, at this moment, I I, I'm pretty certain that all of our preschool qualify at risk.
And in the past
I have one, but doesn't.
In the past, haven't most of them qualified, the majority anyway, because of there's nine factors?
I mean, year to year, not what we've had this year. But also, because in the past years, the ASQSE hasn't been used, it has only been the brigands and um, our enrollment. Well, and then it's been recommended by other districts, like, to use your ASQSE, um, as part of your qualifying tool.
What were, what was when parents came to enrollment? What was communicated to parents? Cuz we've already had parents make enrollment decisions and have kids attending classes, so Sarah, to your point, like, parents made decisions on where to send their kids to preschool for this school year. So what was, were they, the, the outline of who would get fees waived, was there any sort of information presented on that?
Basically, were they told they were gonna be, have their fees waived?
No, no, I don't put any of that information out. Um, that's why I have a letter that goes out after we get all of our brigands done, and we get all of our ASQs done. Um, no, I don't put anything out one way or the other.
Okay, so parents came to enrollment assuming they would have to pay the fee? Unless there were
Not assuming anything, we're not I just like, that wasn't a decision factor. I just like, that wasn't a decision factor of somebody not. It's not listed on anything with our pre-registration or anything like that. Perfect. It's just not put out there. Okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the best.
Now, parents, there were parents that asked and I just explained to them that there are several, there are several qualifiers as far as if your student qualifies at-risk, you know, I just tell them that will be decided in the latter part of September after count day and after we have these things done. But I mean, that might be one out of sixty parents that asks that.
Which do you feel that'll help the kids to benefit the kids the most? Under families?
How do you mean?
If they're going to waive the fees if they qualify for the free meals or just a blanket waive?
Well, if we just do free and reduce, then we're not following the guidelines of the at-risk grant. Because if you follow those guidelines, you have to take into account those nine criteria.
To determine at-risk.
Yes.
Not assess fees.
But if we were to standardize with the other schools, those fees are only waived if they qualify for free and reduced lunches? Is that correct?
Correct.
So the other criteria then would not be considered at that point?
Well, but I'm afraid.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, I'm afraid with doing that because you might get into problems with like Jordan and our kids report because he also has to, in our kids report, he has to fill out as of this year, this just started this year, he has to fill out everything that they qualify at-risk in. So I don't know. I don't, I don't know.
And that's going to lead towards basically they're waiting in terms of at-risk and at-risk funding. But again, it's not going to impact, but nowhere, correct me if I'm wrong, in there, it says that if they qualify as at-risk, you can't assess fees.
No, no, I just don't, yeah, I mean, I just don't know. I mean, I guess maybe it doesn't matter at all.
They're going to still be.
Because as a district, you're making that decision, I mean, on the fees, you're just saying it's based off of this whole thing, but then like on my end, as far as like the at-risk grant goes, that's where it's going to get.
So would potentially put us in jeopardy with the current thirty thousand dollars we.
That was last year.
So can they, so you're, it kind of intertwined, like you don't think that they can be kept separate?
Well.
Because it's it's being.
I.
Used for like two different.
Yes, I do. I just know like, okay, so if 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 you guys say that the fee will be assessed or waived if they qualify at-risk due to free and reduced lunch, just know that still on my document as a preschool document, as an app for the at-risk grant, they are going to qualify at-risk under nine other things.
Yeah, you're, what policy you set's not going to impact how they qualify in the state's eyes.
No.
It's not going to happen.
Just, I mean, but just know that. Yeah.
You still have to report them as at-risk.
Yes.
Yes.
But that money is protected under those nine categories, no matter what we decide to do on assessing fees.
Yeah, there are other places I have to report all the other students in our district, the numbers that are at-risk based off of the nine categories. But for those students, we'll only give funding off of them for free and reduced. So it's not specific to preschool, how they're being qualified as at-risk in the state's eyes. It's just, yes, for that one grant, that risk, that that does lead into the at-risk funding for them, but your policy's not going to impact that at all. Because they're still going to qualify under, I mean, under, they could have a single parent, they qualify. But that single parent makes a million dollars a year, but they're still going to qualify as at-risk as they're a single parent. So it's not going to impact what they get put into the state if they're at-risk or not.
But it would affect us if they make a million dollars a year, they don't qualify for free and reduced lunches, so they're going to pay the fee.
Correct.
And it's just out of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it could still qualify as at-risk, but by our criteria for fees, they have to be just free or reduced lunches.
Correct.
That's it. So if they don't qualify for free and reduced lunches, they're going to pay the fee. Whether they qualify for any of the other criteria, they're still going to pay the fees here. Correct?
If you change the policy to align with every other student in the district, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, that was a lot.
I know, that was a lot.
Making sure.
See why you go back and forth. Yeah.
Making sure things are in the right buckets.
Okay, so you mentioned, I was just saying, we did seventy-five dollars, you know, like we do every other school. But then with preschool not getting as much funding then, I mean, do you feel like preschool should still, should be higher? I mean, it's still, it'd still be across the board that we would waive the fees. But is this something that we consider to, yeah, I mean, leaving at a hundred dollars, still waiving them? Or do we reduce the price to seventy-five?
I mean, and to recall, last year when we discussed like the increase of this fee, I mean, we are, I mean, a hundred dollars is pretty cheap. I mean, the majority of our league, our league schools charge a monthly fee. There are some league schools that charge almost four hundred dollars in a monthly fee, you know, so I just like, I think for me, it's the morale of yes, they only go part-time and they only go Monday through, they go four days a week, not always Monday through Thursday, but they go four days a week and you're still assessing a fee that's higher than your K-12 students.
But we're getting funding for those.
At fifty percent.
We're not getting funding for those preschool kids, so it kind of in a way balances itself out a little bit. So, I mean, I'm fine to keep it at the hundred and then just waiving it if they qualify for free, free and reduced.
Well, and we can reassess that at the end of the school year, right? Like and look at, like and look at, have that consideration again when we look to set fees for next year.
Right.
So.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Okay, so for now, it's just.
You're just basically aligning, so the motion would be, the fees are already set, just, the motion would just be to waive fees based on free lunch.
And this is going to be for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, not right now? What is this going to be for? Is this like in effect right now?
That's what I.
Yeah, and that's, I was questioning that just because I didn't understand the letters being sent out. So you know, if nobody is assuming right now, you know, that they're.
Not.
Yeah, I mean, if.
No letters have been sent out.
If nothing has been sent out, that differs from this, then I think we could go ahead.
Bring it in alignment.
Okay, so hundred dollar fee waived.
Free lunches.
Free and reduced.
But everybody else is just free for their fees.
Oh, it's free.
That's my understanding. That's what I was told, just free. There's free, there's no fees waived for reduced.
No. Okay, so I move to waive fees for the preschool program for students to qualify for free meals affected this school year.
Second. It's been moved in second and all in favor. Passes six zero. Thank you for all the discussion. Sorry if that was confusing. Okay, we'll move on to item eight, reports. Mr. Horn?
Okay, I did place on there for you guys to look at my report. It's just, there's a spreadsheet with that indicates the five-year averages for our state assessment scores for every grade, including the state average, and we hadn't had the opportunity to talk about scores. I don't know if these have been presented to you guys recently or anytime soon, I don't know. But I wanted to at least share those with you so you could see them. As you can see, the ones I've got highlighted in yellow indicate that's where we are at or above the state average. There, there's nothing that KSD puts out that says you got to be state average. It's just generally the number I look at to know how do we compare to every other student across the state. So you will see, I, I, I'm not here to pick out any specific grades or content areas. It's more a matter of showing you guys, here's what we have, here's where we've been scoring, here's where we score well, here's some areas maybe we weren't at the state, state average. It's not anything that at this particular moment that I have looked at and determined that, well, we have a concern here, we have a need here, or we don't have a need here. This is just merely data collection that I wanted you guys to be able to see. And there's many, many different things that can impact state assessment scores. There really are. I, I sat down and brainstormed several, but I mean, just curriculum adoptions, turnover in teaching staff can have impacts. Data analysis, have we looked at the data? Have we actually met and discussed the data to determine what do we think? What could be an indication as to why we aren't meeting the state average? And in some cases, you may never meet the state average. It really just depends on what information is being looked at and what strategies and communications you're having in regards to the state, state assessment scores. Different dynamics of the classes, experience of teachers, the number of teachers, administration, turnover in administration. These are all things that can have impact on state assessment scores, review strategy, student motivation, attendance. These are all things that can impact state assessment scores, but I share it with you because I wasn't sure when's the last time you guys have looked at. It is something I look at. It's something I will share with the principals and we will start having conversations about what are we doing? Have we analyzed data? Are we looking at it to determine, do we see any trends? Do we see anything that, okay, what may be caused this? So it's future conversations with us that'll probably lead into then leadership teams will talk about and probably even the staff. And it does kind of tie into our standards alignment that we're going through with our KISA as part of our KISA plan. So not, I'm not going to go into every specific thing because again, I can't sit here and tell you that we have problems in areas and we don't have problems in areas, but I wanted to share this spreadsheet with you and give you guys an opportunity, if you have any questions, to feel free to ask them. But I wasn't sure the last time you had this information shared with you. So, but for me, I like to look at the state average. How do we compare to the state average?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mrs. Cowan, I want to give you a shout out for the sheer number of above state averages across classes, especially in math.
In where? Yeah.
And to the other administrators as well. I just noticed there's like a big block in math.
And one thing you should understand, typically, and it, it, it hasn't varied, I mean, whether it was when I was at Chapman or Stanton County, usually the younger the grade, the closer to state average and the better kids score and the farther up they go, the older they get, is when we start to separate and scores for some reason just start to decrease in comparison to that state average. And that's not unique to Stanton County. That is a trend, that's a statewide trend. Probably beyond statewide, actually. I would guess this is a national thing. But it just happens. If you chart the data, kids at the third grade level when they start will be scoring pretty well, close to their grade average and the older they get, it just starts getting farther away from the state, not only the state average, but from basically what they'd call category three or on-grade level. And that's not unique to us.
Well, thank you too for the background information on how they changed the cut scores. So.
They did. When you look at this one year in 2025, they changed the cut score so it doesn't look quite the same. It, it didn't really do anything in terms of our comparison to the state average, but they changed the, the cut scores simply because KSD was seeing a disconnect with our scores on national tests that our kids were scoring higher than what they were on the state assessments and performing better in college when they left high schools than what they would be anticipated to score based on their state assessment scores. So, and these guys are probably the same as me. We've been at Stanton County five years ago, we're telling the state department that it's like, we're just not seeing that. Our scores, we aren't seeing that data. And they said, yeah, we're seeing that too. But it, it takes a while for change to happen. I mean, it doesn't just happen overnight. So they've been planning and restrat, re planning to redo the cut scores, but it's taken them a couple of years to get to that point. Any other questions? Any questions from you guys?
Thank you all, thank you to your staff.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a legislative report.
I do not have one. The only thing I would tell you is the same thing I spoke about last time, which was there was legislation in Washington being discussed in terms of some funding to the, to K-12 education. I was unable to find any information that says where that currently is, but if that were to come to fruition, the cuts they were talking about would impact us in our title funding, which helps with some reading programs and other programs in the, our elementary schools and our middle school. But when I was trying to find this information last week, I could not find where anything has been solidified yet. So I don't really have an update on this, but that's the one thing that in our Thursday meetings with ESDAC that they have presented on, but they did not present on last week. So I'll keep watching for that and see what information I have, but I have none at this time.
Any principals wanting to report tonight or are you good?
They were planning on us when you guys want to jump up and go.
Good? Okay.
No, no volunteers.
All right, we'll move on to item nine, consideration of district personnel. Fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
All right. I move we go into executive session for fifteen minutes pursuant to discussing non-elected personnel under the KOA, K O N A acceptance. The purpose of discussing nominations and resignations with Mr. Horn present. The open meeting will resume at, we'll say eight thirty-five. Then moved in second and all in favor. Passes six zero.
Two minutes early.
Look, I told you.
I was going to.
I already have it on in there.
I promised her we wouldn't go. Me too, a little bit. Is there a small?
Yes, we've got fourteen seconds.
Us?
Yes.
Sweet.
You didn't hear that.
I didn't, I didn't hear anything.
Coming out of executive session with the following motion, I move to approve Jason Ingram as assistant high school basketball coach.
Voice.
Voice for this school.
Say it.
Then moved in second and all in favor. Passes six zero. I move to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor. Six zero. Thank you all. Our next meeting will be November third, twenty twenty-five at seven o'clock.